And we're waiting for one of our honorees, so we'll just skip to the second item until he gets here or he's stuck in traffic, okay? And that would be item number two, consideration of elected officials and social media use in relation to the Texas Open Meetings Act and other town policies. Mr. Sly.
Thank you, Mayor. Patricia and I felt like this was, uh, this is an important topic. We've had discussions about it previous, but this recently retired legislature addressed that very issue again. Um, you know, I've been very outspoken about elected officials and social media. Um, I think a strong argument could be made that if an elected official is posting on a social media site, it could be argued that you're in violation of the Open Meetings Act only because you don't know who's reading it, right? And, and the Attorney General, to my knowledge, has never been asked for an opinion on that issue, but what we have done in the past as a result of that, uh, my recollection is, um, you've, you felt comfortable in posting social media, uh, to the social media on issues that, uh, have already been voted on and are in, in, in our rearview mirror, so to speak. Um, there has been a few bills filed and approved. They, I don't know, Patricia, have they been signed yet?
No.
So they haven't been signed by the governor yet, but, uh, what I'd like to do is turn the floor over to Patricia and have her share with you and have just some discussion with all of you about the use of social media moving forward, so.
And, and there are really two issues that are associated with social media usage. One is records retention and the second, records retention, and the second is the Open Meetings Act violations. And I think the legislation that has been proposed, not yet signed by the govern, governor, will address, um, the use of social media. Records retention is still an issue, so let me go through that one first and then I'll tell you what the proposed bill basically has. Um, as a local government, governmental entity, we're required to retain records, um, per the time limit set forth in the Records Retention Act. There are very specific documents that have specific timeframes, and there are other documents that are basically, we're required to keep them as long as they're administratively valuable, have some purpose. So you have a couple of different requirements there, but they're very detailed requirements depending on what the document is. One of the questions that has been raised in the past with regards to records retention is when you're posting on a third-party site, if the government is required to maintain those records, we don't have access to those records. It's not our site. Um, so the question has been, and it's not been answered in Texas yet, although some other states, Florida, uh, for one, has had some cases on it, and they have a similar Public Information Act, uh, and Open Meetings Act to Texas. They've had opinions that have sort of danced around it where they've said they thought that it really was information that should be retained, even if it's on a third-party site. So knowing that there's another state that has a similar statute, um, and knowing that issue exists is one of the reasons that we're talking about this tonight, is that if you're posting on third-party sites, the question is, not answered yet in Texas, um, is the governmental body required to retain that? So that's issue number one. Now, the second issue, which is the Open Meetings Act violation, which I think we've talked about, uh, that's been the main thrust of, of the concerns we've had, seems like it might be getting addressed if this bill is signed by the governor. It is to be a website that's maintained by the governing body. It's not a third-party website. Um, it is required to have, um, a message, the message board has to be no more than one click away from your main page. Um, it is to be maintained. Any posting that goes up there has to be maintained for 30 days on the site, um, once it's posted. And then after it's been posted for 30 days, our records retention for that proposed under this new bill is six years. So that's gonna create, anytime something gets posted, uh, it stays up for 30 days, and then once it's been there for 30 days, we keep it for six years. But like I said, it does have to be a site that's managed by the governing body. Um, the only people that can post to it are members of the governing body or staff that are authorized by those members of the governing body to make those posts for them. You cannot vote on that. Um, they can't be used to take a vote, and, um, you, it, it, the Act specifically says that it's not to be construed as an action of the governmental body, the conversation that goes on, um, on that website. So that's what's being proposed, which will at least answer that question. Some of you may be familiar that the City of Alpine and the council members started the lawsuit, uh, for Open Meetings Act, and that essentially failed. So they were claiming violation of their First Amendment right. So I think this is partially the legislature's attempt to, let's put at least some of this, um, information about social media that's so prevalent now into some kind of statute and start some, some guidelines for it. So if it gets signed by the governor, it will at least make that more black and white, you know, black letter clear for all of us.
So Patricia, what, if I understand correctly, if that gets signed by the governor, that means that, that people would be able to post on our site?
September, September 1st.
Okay.
That the council members would be able to post on the town's message board.
Okay, September 1st. But in any case, council members are not to be posting on upcoming items other than that location, if that's passed?
Well, this addresses yes and, yes and no, 'cause it doesn't say that, but if you go post somewhere else about upcoming issues, um, there's still the issue of is there an open meetings violation?
Right.
It, that doesn't address it here.
And I know-
So this is the only place it addresses that, that issue for you.
I know whenever, you know, uh, we all get frustrated with open meetings requirements, and whenever I've talked to TML, um, besides they say to listen to you because they know you, but they also have commented very much that elected officials should not ever be posting on an upcoming item on a public website. That's, that was the opinion. You know, they, they do these, um, sessions at TML with the, with the legal staff, and that question comes up every time. And, um, that, that's the opinion, so I wanted to just make sure that was-
I want to be clear, Patricia. Are you saying that if he signs this bill, starting September the 1st, a council member can post on our website opinions on upcoming issues?
Well, it doesn't specify, it doesn't limit it to upcoming or historical. It, it basically just says, "I'm gonna find it where I can read it to you." "A communication or exchange of information between members of a governmental body about public business or public policy over which the governmental body has supervision or control does not constitute a meeting or deliberation for purposes of this chapter if..." And then it goes through the written communication, it's posted on the online message board, it's maintained by the municipality, it's displayed for 30 days, it goes through the list of things that, that basically you have to comply with in order for it not to be an open meetings violation. 'Cause remember, whether it's an open meetings violation goes back to, is it a deliberation or discussion of public policy or public business? So you go back to, is it a deliberation? And this statute is, is expressly saying it's not a deliberation when you're posting. It doesn't specify or differentiate between past and future or present.
How does that differentiate from an email? If I was to send an email to everyone, how does that differentiate?
Well, you still can't daisy chain, it, this does not give an exception for email. You still can't email to a quorum. That's, that's a different topic.
Yeah, I think that the difference, in my opinion, the difference in the email versus, is you're putting it on the town's website for the public, everyone, to see. So it's essentially like being in a meeting, that everyone has access to that. It's not something that other people, so maybe that's, you know, where email, others don't necessarily, you know, that becomes a pure daisy chain or-
I'm sorry, I thought he meant, what's the legal difference? And there's not one, 'cause there's not going to be an exception for that. So you still can't do that, but you can do it on the town's message board. You can not email, but you can post your message.
So that's actually a, uh, a lot looser than we've had in the past.
It is.
If that passes.
If, if the governor signs it.
It's already passed. It's waiting the governor's signature.
It passed both the House and Senate.
And, and I just want to be very, very clear that what we're talking about is, you know, the, the town, as an example, has a blog. It has a Facebook page, and, and subject to the signing of that, of those bills, you would be, uh, perfectly okay posting to that.
I would question posting-
I wouldn't pick to the Facebook page.
Facebook, 'cause we don't own Facebook. We own our town website, but we don't own the Facebook page.
We control that Facebook. And, and here's, here's the bottom line to all of this. Patricia leaves tomorrow for her annual legal-
Right.
-conference, in which she'll get a legislative, legislative update, and we're gonna get further clarification about what the intent of all of that is.
And in the meantime, we should stay off.
Yeah, and, and-
Wow, this doesn't go into effect till September 1st anyway.
That's right.
But it does say message board or similar internet application, but it's the one maintained by the town on our website, no more than one click off the main page. I mean, there are some very specific requirements.
We have control of, I guess we have control of that, don't we?
It's TC Exchange, right.
There are some very specific requirements for it.
You can take down and put up or whatever and control that.
But, but we still don't have control of the retention on Facebook. We don't have control over the content of the Facebook page 100 percent. We, we do have 100 percent control on the TC Exchange, but on the Facebook page, we're still relying on a third-party to retain.
To retain.
So that would be, I would rule that out.
Yeah. If we, if we don't have retention capability, then we don't meet the standards of the, the legislation that's up for signature.
There are actual products, um, that they're making available to cities for that reason, um, Facebook to capture and to be able to retain. So if that becomes the case, we'll have to look at that.
Uh, with the retention and then the access to the Public Information Act, uh, this just convolutes the, the issues even that much further. Uh, so I, I would ask you to all, you know, until we know exactly what the interpretation is.
It, it's still, just to summarize, it's still, according to everyone's opinion, gonna be an issue if you're posting about public business on a third-party website, from an open meetings perspective and from a records retention perspective. That has not fixed any of this. What this has done is allowed governmental entities to maintain their own message boards and, and open that to the public and then have a retention of six years. So that, this has fixed one component, but not the other component.
Okay.
And, and while we're speaking of, of the legislative actions and waiting for the governor's signature and that kind of thing, there is also a bill, uh, that has been submitted to the governor for signature that would require golf carts that are on the highways and public streets to be licensed by Department of Motor Vehicles. Now, there is some conjecture that that only applies to certain counties, and again, that'll be, uh, that'll be, uh, referred to Patricia, and she'll get some clarification on that as well.
Since we're talking about the legislative-
This, this was if you're using your golf cart under the state law and, and, you know, out two miles from a golf course. I'm sure they'll have a good fee for that license plate.
Since we're still talking about legislative session, one thing that I had brought up, Mike, to you, and you mentioned that they were in discussion, but you weren't sure how that went, is that something we can talk about now or up here?
Uh, no, I'm not prepared to talk about that.
And we don't have it on our agenda.
Yeah, we didn't have the golf carts either.
Did, um, we know? If you got here?
They're not here yet.
Okay. Then we'll move on to, uh, item three, presentation and overview of the Trophy Club Tax Increment Financing District.
Madam Mayor, our consultant, David Pettit, is here to kind of carry you through a very brief TIF 101 and kind of, and then narrow the discussion a little bit about, uh, where we're headed with, uh, TIF 1 and TIF 2 in Trophy Club and kind of give you some, uh, some parameters there. And David is very aware that we're waiting on our designees to, to come, so he's prepared to stop in the middle if they come, so. David, you're on.
Interrupt me at any time. I'd be happy to sit back down, but, uh, it's a pleasure being here this evening. Um, as Mike said, my name's David Pettit. I'm with Bennett Benner Pettit, um, Architecture Economic Development Planning Firm, uh, based in Fort Worth, Texas. Been doing tax increment financing and economic development for better part of 20 years. Uh, have a lot of experience with different projects, and, um, I was so excited to hear, um, that y'all were entertaining a TIF, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. Um, and I won't call it a 101, I'll call it a TIF Essentials, um, because I think a lot of people, uh, read about these. And, um, one of the things I always say about, um, 80 percent of understanding a government program is understanding the acronyms. So, uh, we're getting health insurance for our company and having to go through the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, and the HIX, the Health Exchange. So I've had my fill of, uh, acronyms, but, um, no, TIF is no different in that, um, TIF, um, is owned by several, um, different, um, acronyms. And it is a tool that local governments can use to publicly fund needed improvements within a reinvestment zone. TIFs, they are also known as Tax Increment Reinvestment Zones, or ATIRS. Those are used interchangeably. They're enabled through Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. Taxing entities contribute real property taxes received from increases on property within the zone. And there's been some changes to TIF over the years. In 1999, the state legislation changed, um, uh, that discouraged ISD participation in TIF districts. They were excluding taxable property from state equalization calculations, essentially Robin Hood. What they were doing was they were sheltering their, um, rich property values within TIFs and still benefiting themselves and kind of skirting that. And so, uh, they did not make it illegal. A lot of people will say it's illegal, they just discourage it. Um, it's a direct penalty to any state allocation you get. But ISD, uh, TIF participation agreements prior to October 1, 1999, were exempt from the new legislation. So there's a lot of TIFs that were, there was a flurry of TIFs that were created in 1998, 99, as that legislative session. You'll notice they're all, um, August, um, right before September 1 of 99, and I was a part of probably about 10 of those. So, um, and we're dealing with those now, and, and the great thing was you were able to have some school district participation in some of these, uh, community development projects. When I talk about the TIF creation, um, process, um, there's, there's various procedures that are outlined in Chapter 311 for creating and amending, um, a TIF. As I like to say within a TIF, there's two main documents, um, the creation ordinance and the TIF project and financing plan. You will hear these referenced a, a number of different times. That creation ordinance establishes four key elements within the TIF. The boundary, always very important, what property's included in there, the term, uh, the TIF board, and also the preliminary project and financing plan. Upon TIF creation, a final project and financing plan is subsequently approved by the TIF board and then the city council by separate ordinance. So in a nutshell, that's the TIF creation process. There's some public hearing notices. There, there's one that has to occur seven days prior to the consideration of that ordinance, but, um, this law has been changed a lot, it seems, every two years. There's something new within the TIF legislation that comes there, but we didn't have any major items in 2013, so not much to keep up with there. Raises the question of why create a TIF. Um, there's a number of different reasons. Uh, one is private development activity is expected to occur within a designated area. Um, we did that in Fort Worth with Trinity River Vision, creating a large district anticipating development would come in there. We would capture that and put it back into investments for the river. Um, TIFs benefit a large area, an area at large, rather than being project-specific. So, um, downtown Fort Worth is a TIF I've worked very familiar, uh, very familiar with. Capture all the increment from downtown and then make specific improvements. The new plaza that's being built in Sundance Square is being funded through TIF, $11 million worth of TIF funds. It provides a funding source without impacting the current, um, stream of general fund revenues for each participating taxing entity, something very important for our town manager and staff to make sure that it does not impact the current stream of general fund revenues. Um, and it also, uh, gives the ability to leverage revenues from taxable value within the TIF to generate a larger increment. Take some of those increments, reinvest them in the area, um, and also encourage additional development so you have more taxable revenue than you otherwise would have. And attract developers and investors into an area that might not otherwise occur. Time to sit down?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Thank you. We're going to, our third person has arrived, so we're going to slide over to our presentation. April, you going to let them know to come in?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, everybody's, thank you all for coming. Tonight, uh, we would like to recognize three Trophy Club residents, Brandon Henig, Tim Bilbury, and Jake Crouch, and I hope I got the names close to right. Um, and I have a description of the, uh, situation so that the gentleman helped put together, so I'd like to read that so that everyone understands why we really think this is an important thing to do. "On Friday, May 10th, a small group of family and friends went to go eat at Diego's Restaurant in Westlake immediately following their Little League Baseball game in Trophy Club. While eating dinner on the patio at Diego's, we all heard a loud cry for help coming from behind us. As we turned around and stood up, there was a young man laying on his back in the fountain in obvious pain and distress. Tim Bilbury, Brandon Henig, and Jake Crouch ran out of the patio and jumped into the fountain to assist this young man. Although the fountain was only three to four inches deep, this young man was muttering that he was dying again. The way his body was clenched up, a few scenarios came to mind." Are you okay with this? You okay with me reading this?
Oh, it's fine.
Okay. "First, he slipped while in the fountain and possibly had a severe fracture. His arm was slightly raised and bent at a very awkward angle, or a possible seizure, or he was going into shock due to head trauma or an other incident. They didn't really know. As we knelt down to calm the young man and assess his situation, we quickly realized, as soon as we put our hands on him, that a different scenario was happening. The moment we put our hands on him, a numbness engulfed our bodies, tunnel vision rapidly onset, and a feeling of pain and extreme tension with a loss of muscle function occurred. Imagine when you wake up in the middle of the night and your arm is asleep. Now imagine that from head to toe. As we quickly looked down, noticing that we were standing kneeling in water, Tim yelled out this, that this young man was getting electrocuted, and this is going to hurt, and pull on three. No hesitation. After three hard pulls, we had this young man at the side of the fountain. We didn't make it any further than that because we got hit with the same electrical current too. The one thing that we can't seem to imagine was that we only felt the shock of the electricity for three to five seconds. This young man was electrocuted for an estimated 25 to 30 seconds. For the next 36 hours..." This is really, I can't, I could never imagine, I think you've done an excellent job of letting people really understand what's happening. "For, um, for the next 36 hours, we experienced bilateral arm soreness and some occasional hand twitching and numbness. Tim was the lucky one who had to buy a new pair of shoes because the soles were blown out of them. Again, five to eight seconds on three adult men versus 25 to 30 seconds on a 12-year-old boy. There's obviously no question who suffered the worst. He was out of breath, white as a ghost, and in obvious shock, no pun intended. We kept trying to, he kept trying to get up and stand as if a child was learning to walk. He eventually made it over to a chair, and soon the paramedics arrived. Everything from then on happened so fast. We told our families we were okay. Some of our kids were upset, but they had to make sure by asking us only questions six- and seven-year-olds would ask. We answered questions from police and paramedics and pointed out which can light his foot got stuck in that caused him to get electrocuted. He was taken away by ambulance, and the scene quickly cleared out. We went back to our table at Diego's and sat down, wondering what the heck just happened. It really didn't hit us until the next day when the soreness set in, and due to social media, we learned that this young man was admitted to Cook Children's Medical Center. That morning, we learned that he is 12 years old, a student at Medlin Middle School, and his name is Shaw Jones." And I, I have a clock to present, but I, I just want to say thank you. I think, um, it's just people will do something just without even stop to think about what's happening to you. And so, let me come down. And I'd like to present this certificate of recognition, and if you all would like to make any comments, please feel free. This one is to Brandon Henig. "Thank you for going above and beyond in helping fellow Trophy Club resident Shaw Jones, when on Friday, May 10th, 2013, Tim Bilbury, Brandon Henig, and Jake Crouch helped to save Shaw's life by pulling him out of a fountain of live electric current." Thank you. The first is for Jake Crouch.
Hmm? Do you want to say anything?
Uh, I have no regulation of the night, so.
I can understand.
I have no idea what happened.
Well, we're so glad you're here with us. That's the best part of it.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ed. It's just, I'm so proud, I'm always so proud of this community, but to know that we have people like yourselves, it just makes it so much more special.
Would you like to?
And you, I'll have anything you want to say, welcome to.
Would you like to say anything? Just an update on his condition? Everything's good?
Uh, he's, um, yeah, he started swim, swim team Thursday, and, uh-
Doctors say full recovery, you know that.
Yeah, he's doing, he's doing well.
And he's back in the water.
He's back in the water.
If we don't have any open mics in there.
We don't have any power for an hour four.
Well, not anymore.
I, I really want to thank all of you for having the clearness of, of sight to see what was going on and to have the, the, just the quickness of action, to take action right away. A lot of people just think, well, what do we do? You guys stood up, did it right away, and got in there and saved my son's life. I can't thank you enough, and I'll never have enough words to express that. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
David, how are you gonna follow that?
We are now going to go back into our regular meeting. Your, everyone is welcome to stay, or you're welcome to.
The answer to that question, Mike, is I can't. I had a little tear in my eye, and that puts a lot in perspective. It really does. So, well, do you all want to talk about TIFs? I, I don't have too many slides, and, um, we'll take some of your questions after we go through. Um, I think this is a, a really good chart with regards to, um, explaining the overall components of, uh, tax increment financing. What this chart shows is a base ad valorem, real property, which is the purple. Um, and essentially, when a TIF is put in place, that value is, the taxing jurisdictions continue to receive that.
Go ahead.
Oh, perfect, perfect. The taxing jurisdictions continue to receive that revenue, um, and then any increments, and those increments can come from two, um, two ways. One is just natural increases in property value, nothing really occurred, or the second, more likely, is through construction, um, new development. And so that is, um, committed to, um, the overall TIF fund, um, and funds public projects within the TIF. And then, um, it, that, once the TIF is terminated, all those revenues roll into the taxing jurisdiction. So that is more of the windfall, um, that comes into the taxing jurisdictions. Um, I think this is a key component here because, um, a lot of, uh, TIFs are done differently, but the taxing entity rates are negotiated. So it's between the town, city, and the county, and the, um, Tarrant County College, and the other taxing jurisdictions to negotiate the rate, and they can vary. The city could decide to put 50 percent of its ad valorem rate into the TIF, um, for real property, and the county could decide to do 50 percent as well, or they could do 25 percent. That is all, um, negotiated, and it is, uh, not identical. Um, we get into two components, um, of a TIF, uh, the project cost. What can you spend these funds on? And I've highlighted a little bit, cost of public works, public improvements within the zone, plus other costs incidental to those expenditures- the zone, plus other costs incidental to those expenditures and obligations. Those things that you typically think about, roads, streets, sewer, water, public infrastructure that local governments are very accustomed to paying for. There's another new component that came in, and I believe this was with the legislature in 2005, is what we call a Chapter 380. You'll hear it called Program 380, or sometimes just a 380 agreement. And that is Chapter 380 of the Local Government Code, which basically says you can make grants of public money to promote state and local economic development and to stimulate business and commercial activity in the municipality. So, you can make grants outside of that, and they don't have to go to public improvements as long as you can meet a test that it is actually promoting commercial and economic development activity within the zone. That was a real game changer that allowed a lot more flexibility, depending if you have a greenfield development or an existing development. I did a lot of downtown projects, and the infrastructure's there, so there wasn't a lot we could fund. And so, you sometimes get into facade enhancements and leases for 10 years, and this just made it a lot easier come 2005. We didn't have to get as creative. And there are a couple of key elements of TIF agreements that I wanted to just share with y'all before I took any questions. One is, you'll see this a lot, that typically, private investment does not equal taxable value. Developers will often argue with me and say, your values are too low. My response is, state law requires appraisal districts to value the property at fair market value. However, they have a large volume of properties to do, and they lack the access to the specific ongoing data. They also have to be fair and equitable. You can't charge one person one rate and another person another rate. In our experience, most cases throughout the state, the taxable value can range anywhere between 50 and 90% of real value. So, your real value being determined on an income approach, cost approach, or a comparable approach. The appraisal district uses that comparable approach. And so, for us, as we get into evaluating TIF projects, the best way to determine the taxable value is to identify the comparable properties within the appraisal district the development has built. So, it's not real hard, it's not science, we just go in and we take for, whether it be Denton County or Tarrant County, and list retail, the highest to the lowest, and then we say that we think this product type will be at this product type. And we've been very good over the years, and we can tell you within a couple of dollars, even, you know, five, 10 years down the road, if that development is built, how much revenue it's going to generate. Because we have historical data, I think 2008 showed us that you can't always rely on historical data, but it is helpful in some of your modeling. Since I've had some discussions with the town manager and his staff, you know, we've taken a look at the proposed TIFs number one and TIFs number two. Statutorily, they're required, it's tax, it's a town a Trophy Club, tax increment financing district number one, is how they legally have to, to, to be named.
David, before you get into that.
Yes, sir.
Address, I mean, the question that some may have is, why would, why would other taxing jurisdictions, other taxing jurisdictions even want to participate? Why does a county want to participate in a, in a proposed TIF, as an example?
It's to encourage economic development. I've heard the argument from the county, you know, I don't get the sales tax, I don't get the hotel occupancy tax, but I've heard some very eloquent arguments that we're all in the game of economic development. We're all here to better our communities. And so, it's just really on a case-by-case basis, what is the impact to the county? And I think you have to make some determinations, but for this, you know, investment, would this be there? Or, is the investment going to happen, but with a TIF investment, could it be that much better? Two, it's a better, you know, quality for the overall community, it's producing more tax increment. And so, really, what we do when we talk to the other taxing jurisdictions, and, you know, the county's the first one, is just show that, look, this property has been dormant for a while. With your help, this is what we can do, but the strength of the proposal comes to the project plan. What are you spending that money on? I've done some projects in Arlington, right around Arlington Highlands at I-20 and Matlock, and we went and asked them for money to help with a Center Street Bridge. And the county said, no, 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 we're already paying for that in the bond election, so you're hitting us twice. You know, and so, they excluded participation in that, but they were more than happy to pay with some of the infrastructure that was a part of the overall site to leverage that. So, that is the overall reason, and so, it, it comes down to a cost benefit. Everything comes down to a cost benefit. If we don't do it, is it likely to happen, and to what extent? And if we do participate, you know, how can we, you know, limit our participation and still get the full value? But all of that comes down to the project plan. Is there something that they can, you know, wrap their arms around?
And generally speaking, I mean, we, we have a little bit of Tarrant County, predominantly we're in Denton County, both of, both of whom historically have participated in other communities' TIF programs.
Have experience in both, and Tarrant County has a long list of, Fort Worth, I think, has 16 TIFs. We've also done TIFs in North Urtland Hills, Colleyville, South Lake has a TIF, Ullis, I think just about every city in Tarrant County has one, and I think to some extent, Grapevine is another good example. You, you had asked the question, why would Tarrant County participate in Grapevine Mills? That's a great economic generator for the overall Tarrant County, and the county's a big player and a big participant in that. And so, those are a number of different projects, and so, they do have a history of participating.
So, I mean, it's, it's really other people's monies, whether it be county or some other taxing jurisdiction, that helped pay for those public improvements in that particular zone.
Yes, and, and that is a little bit of the art of the negotiation with the other taxing jurisdictions, because the first argument that I could tell you that Judge Whitley, what Tarrant County has told me, was, well, I don't get sales tax. And so, you can now put sales tax into a TIF, and so, when we did that Arlington Highlands in Arlington, we put a quarter of the city's one cent sales tax into that to help pay for those improvements. But the way the city looked at it was, for every dollar I'm getting, you know, I'm putting 25 cents in to make this development, a really neat development, but I'm retaining 75 cents that I otherwise did not have. Plus, another cent's going to, they're not at full, two cents, sorry. So, their others is going to pay for Cowboy Stadium and property tax reduction and the like, so.
Could I give that flip side of that question? Why would a town not participate in a TIF?
There would be some questions about the overall validity of the public improvements. You know, are they going to benefit the developer, are they going to develop, or to benefit, you know, the community at large? You know, there are a lot of examples to where TIFs have been proposed, and because of the aspiration sometimes of the developer or in the community have not really met. And so, I think the real art to making one of these work is to understand what the developer's trying to accomplish. And then, number two, is to marry that with a project and financing plan that, that just works. And, you know, in downtown Fort Worth, what we really did was, we paid for free parking. That was one of the things in the early 90s, was they said, there's not a place to park. So, we used those TIF funds to pay for evening, free evening and weekend parking. And so, it was beneficial to the developer, but it was beneficial to the city, and it's also beneficial to the patrons that go down there. So, it, it's a careful balance, but I haven't been involved in a whole lot of TIFs that towns have not participated, because you play that, that game of, will it happen? Okay, if it happens, to what extent? And with the TIF, I can control, because it comes with strings. And the government money always comes with strings, and so, you can control the destiny of that development. If there was not that TIF, really, I mean, if, if your zoning's in place, there's not a whole lot of control of quality and, and also the development potential.
And, and my last question.
Yes, sir.
Is, at least at this point, assume we move forward and the council approves the TIF plan and the financing plan, and we, we end up with TIF one or, and/or TIF two or both. And over a period of time, the market falls through, whatever, for whatever reason, the development doesn't occur. What then?
You can, at one, at one point, you can abolish the TIF, and so, no harm, no foul.
And what happens to that money?
It is refunded. If there's no, if nothing has been spent, it is rebated to all the taxing jurisdictions that participate. Actually have one of those, we put a TIF in for the, oh, the new toll road to Cleburne, 121. And it just really wasn't generating that much development. And, and so, I did a development there, Acme Brick, and we were able to do it with a sales tax consolidation to make that project happen and retain that in Fort Worth. So, a couple of years ago, they just said, it's not really working the way we thought it was going to work, so let's just abolish it, and they just refunded those funds to each of the taxing jurisdictions that participated. And that was a very large, and those are very difficult to, you'll hear this probably a lot from me, and if I overuse it, please tell me, but crystal ball. I wish I had a crystal ball that I could tell you how everything's going to be developed. The best thing that I can do is take information that a developer's given me and tell you what I think the market can bear. A lot of times, it's, it's hard to, if the developer says he's going to, you know, deliver $200 million of taxable value tomorrow, you know, I'd say, okay, well, realistically, you can't do that. You haven't pulled a building permit, you know, it takes a good 14 months, and then there's a lag in, you know, taxable value time. So, there's a number of different things that can happen, but one, or you can amend the project and financing plan to do a different project. At any time during the process, you can amend that plan, and that's had to occur on a number of different occasions. And I mentioned downtown Fort Worth, but we had the tower when it was hit by tornado, and we didn't have any way to really kind of facilitate that. And so, we went back and we amended the plan, and they had $4 million of asbestos abatement that we paid for that kind of made that development happen. And so, we just went back through and amended that plan. Same thing with Grapevine Mills. That plan was originally pay for all that original infrastructure. We amended that just recently, or several years ago, to include a 380 component, and they've used that 380 component to lure Legoland and the aquarium. We just did it for Colleyville, where they amended their TIF to put in a 380, and that lured Whole Foods that kind of came in there. So, there's a number of different things that you can do, and so, when you put together a TIF plan, I wish I would know what would happen 10 years from now, 15 years from now, but I think it's best, at best, probably a five to 10-year plan.
But you can amend it.
You can amend it at any time. Yes, ma'am.
And normally, when you put together a TIF plan, you define your projects?
You have to, per state law.
Your initial, so you are right up front saying what it is you're intending to fund with the TIF?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, and with dollar estimates.
Okay.
Madam, I'm the new kid on the block, so bear with me, they might know all this, but you mentioned 380. Now, I look at the Chapter 311, one, especially on TIF number one, which area does that fall under? Because they talk about blighted area and obsolete planning, and then it says mentions 10% of the property within the reinvestment zone cannot, cannot be used for residential purposes.
That's actually increased with the 2011 legislature, so I don't know where your, your code is, but that's actually gone up to 25%, depending if the, the size of the city. But that is an interesting case. It's really a determination of the city council or the town council about whether an area meets the criteria for being a tax increment financing district. I guess the most notable case was the Cabela's on I-35. There was a lawsuit from a group of concerned citizens that it did not meet, you know, predominantly open, I think, is the one component that I've always used to meet the legal requirements, that if the area's predominantly open, you can check that box. And what they did was they found, and they went through and they said, you know, this did not meet the requirements per Chapter 311, because they had basically said it was, you know, flood prone, and they had used a portion of that to do some, I think, some entryway that was into that. But the court ruled that really that's a, it's subjective, and that's a determination of the city council and town council to make that determination. And so, I've never had a problem with that. With the Arlington Highlands, it was predominantly open, and what we did was, we just did petition-driven, where we had 51% of the property owners petition the city council to create it. That creates another interesting TIF board scenario to where you have to have the state senator and the state legislature on your TIF board. Downtown Fort Worth was a petition-driven, so as long as you had 51% of the property owners that petitioned to put the TIF in place, those other criteria don't, are not applicable.
So, you're saying irrespective of the fact that an ordinance was passed showing building sites and a site plan, well, not a site plan, but a concept plan, the council could still go ahead and approve a TIF?
Oh, yes, and maybe I didn't fully understand your question, but I, I just did this for, in Ullis at 121 in Glade, they had a, a PD that's put in place, and somebody questioned about, well, it was exceeded, because it was showed a lot of single-family, it exceeded 10% residential. It's at the time of creation what the land use per tad shows, and so, it's a point in time. And so, there's a lot of TIFs, I just did two in, in Irving, that are vacant land, but there are going to be 800 single-family units. And that's going to way exceed 10%, 50%, it's going to be 100% residential, it's at the time the TIF was created. Future land use doesn't matter, and also, the zoning, a PD doesn't matter, it's the land use about how it's coded.
At the time.
At the time, and so, the PD-30 would be coded, I don't know what the land use, but it would be vacant, it would be vacant land, vacant commercial land, depending on how they have it, or it could be vacant ag land, I don't know.
I guess just one other question, Mike. From what I recall, the original TIF one was going to be the Quorum area. Is that still in the, have you switched from the Quorum to the?
David's got a couple of charts now that talk about what PID one is and PID two is, what kind of the geographic.
TIF, not PID.
What did I say? Sorry.
Acronyms.
We've got too many acronyms in this town. Yeah, TIF one and TIF two.
I thought you were finished with the presentation.
No, sir.
He's got a couple more slides that'll detail exactly what you're asking.
I have more questions when you're finished.
Yeah, yeah. After, any other questions from where we're? After some initial discussions with town staff, we put together and just did some initial analysis based upon what some developers have proposed, not only on TIF one, but also on TIF two. Of course, this incorporates PD-30. There was a suggestion to incorporate this vacant piece of land because it is ripe for redevelopment. And then also, you know, what are the future uses of the city property? And also, you know, does this have potential to, to be development, to be developed? And so, most of this has a pretty low tax value, and taking into consideration that boundary, and then, really, the driving force behind that, the proposed development.
Can you go back one chart? I want to correct something you said. The governmental property that you outlined is not city property, it's technically mud property.
Mud property.
Mud-owned property. And depending on what the mud's enabling legislation is and whether or not they want to participate, conceptually, in this particular TIF, you know, public improvements, additional storage facilities, whatever the case may be, by including the, the mud property in, in TIF one, was our rationale for making, being able to make those improvements with TIF dollars, as opposed to, you know, geo-bonded dollars or whatever the case.
And I think part of the, the primary reason was, if we were to spend any TIF dollars, it would need to be within the boundary. And so, that was the primary reason for doing that. But you are correct that municipal utility districts, depending on their enabling legislation, can participate in that, but this is primarily, I've gotten into problems before to where you had TIF funds, but you couldn't spend them outside unless they benefit it. And of course, you can amend it, it just becomes a lot problematic.
I wanted to clarify that point.
Yes, and I apologize.
We have a director out in the audience, and, and, you know, that was the only rationale for us to even include that property.
And it's tax-exempt property currently, so.
There won't be any increment, but it would allow us to apply dollars for improvements to that property, for public improvements.
And of course, all of this, a majority of the increment being driven by the PD-30, the 26- the twenty-six acre, uh, mixed-use site. And what we like to do, um, with these is to take these uses, look at the overall market, and then look at a reasonable rollout. Um, and, and really, this, you know, uh, the discussion of this, it depends on how optimistic the developer is and how good they are at delivering the overall plan. And I think that there's, um, a lot of, um, components, multifamily, we all know works very well now. But I know that we have a PD in place that you need more commercial. You need so much commercial before you can have the multifamily online. So, we've taken that into consideration. I can also tell you that I was in Las Vegas at ICSC, um, about two weeks ago. And if there was any doubt that the recession is over, uh, those developers put it out of my mind because I've been going for a, a number of years, and it's been kind of dead and decimated since two thousand and eight. Um, it's back in full force with people looking for sites and looking for development. And so, that's part of the reason that we're here. Um, what we did was we went through and looked at all of those overall uses, which included four hundred and eighty-four thousand square feet of retail, office, multifamily, hotel, and cinema. Um, and we kind of rolled that out, looking at a reasonable expectation, and also looking at reasonable taxable values. Um, for retail, um, in the area, that's about three hundred dollars a foot. Um, for office, it's about two hundred dollars a foot. For multifamily, taxable value comes in at about eighty thousand a unit. Might cost them a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and forty, but taxable value is what really, um, proves that. Um, hotel is another one that comes in, and, um, a hundred and twenty thousand a key. Um, and I, I actually questioned that because I said, "Well, what about the Gaylord?" They have so much square footage, they're, the, 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 um, taxable value goes down. Um, whereas you might have something like a Hampton Inn that doesn't have a lot of that open meeting space and atrium space. So, on, on, um, the highest taxable value of any property of a hotel property, um, in Tarrant County is the Hilton, um, at the Southlake Town Center, uh, has the highest taxable value. And then that's higher than the Worthington, the Omni, any of these others. And so, um, once again, it comes down to comparable values and just listening from top to bottom and finding what your realistic expectation would be. Um, and then, of course, a rollout. But with this, um, incorporates a overall development plan and delivering that four hundred and eighty-four thousand square feet by two thousand and twenty. Um, and I just wanted to, for, for, um, you know, just discussion purposes, that generates a hundred and fifty-one million, um, dollars of taxable value. At your tax rate, which is fifty-four cents?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one cents?
And some change.
It's about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So, the town, if this came to fruition, there's seven hundred and fifty-five, or seventy-five thousand dollars. If you put half of it into a TIF, that could go to fund some TIF improvements. The remainder goes to increase your overall city budget. So, it's a substantial amount of taxable value that's coming in, um, and that needs to be considered. Now, I can also say that, you know, we can run numbers all day long, and I wish I had the crystal ball, but we have a pretty good idea, and we can tell when a development, um, has some components, you know, will it work, will it not work? And there's a number of different components that seem to work, and they have the PD in place. And so, we feel comfortable with that, two thousand and twenty. We have not met with the developer to discuss these, this is just kind of our initial past. I feel really good about the hundred and fifty-one million. When it comes online, it might be two thousand and twenty-five, you know, before all components come online, but these are kind of our best guess.
It, it should be also said at this point, he's fixing to get into TIF two, uh, but those numbers are, as of today. And, and already, uh, the developer's indicated to me that, uh, some of those mixes are changing, the numbers are gonna change. Uh, but that's based on the latest, uh, concept plan that the developer has provided. He is, he actually took a, a, a tweaked concept plan to ICSC. He's getting those numbers back to David, and once David gets those numbers, those numbers will change. So, don't, don't hang your hat on any kind of number that you see today. But generally speaking, what was it, a hundred and fifty million dollars?
Yeah, a hundred and fifty million taxable value.
It's gonna be somewhere in that neighborhood as it relates to assessed value.
Well, and I think, Mike, you were mentioning like a cinema, I think there was one just announced in the area, was there not?
Different kind of cinema, but yeah.
Yeah, one exit down. So, I mean, that, that could impact whether another cinema, they have three-mile trade areas. So, it's all about timing of that development and when it gets online.
I, I guess that is one of my questions, because you know, up and down one fourteen between Southlake and Roanoke, there's going to be a lot of developments, some already in the planning. So, how do you take into account all of that as you're beginning to develop a TIF for us? I mean, two miles east.
Right.
And that way.
And, and, you know, that was, uh, relatively new, uh, news. Uh, I guess my response to that would be that you're never penalized for being aggressive within a TIF. What really comes on the ground, it might be a little disappointing, but wouldn't you much rather have the higher expectation to capture than to be short-sighted and say, "Oh, only multifamily's gonna occur here?" So, we kind of sometimes have to take it at the developer's word of what they have. But I think, eh, all indications, they have to tweak those site plans as the market changes. And, and they might hold hope that they can get a cinema, but if it's within that trade area, I can tell you, they're not gonna get a, a cinema. And so, they're gonna have to change that. So, does that mean more retail? Does that mean a larger hotel? Those type of things. And coming from a planning and architecture firm, you know, our site plans, where I was labeling, you know, option one B, and sometimes we'll be at sixty-two B, you know, by the time the project gets built. And, uh, I, I can tell you a good example of that is, uh, we did West Seventh in, in Fort Worth. And so, that really anticipated a boutique hotel and a, on the corner at Seventh and University, um, a ten-story, um, office building. Well, the crash happened, and we had fully designed, my firm's an architecture firm, a boutique hotel. Well, they couldn't get financing. And so, they had this land that they had paid for, and they said, "What are we gonna do?" Well, multifamily was very hot, so they just built more multifamily with retail on the bottom floor. And then the other, um, retail, or, um, office piece, there's not gonna be another office building spec-built. You know, this was in two thousand and eight, so they ended up putting more multifamily. And so, and the city was happy because the taxable value came online, and they had paid top dollar for that dirt, so they had to have something happen.
I, I just want to make one thing clear here. Beck may have some differences, and he can only, at this point, make changes that are higher unless he comes back to, in fact, he has to go back to the council to make a change in what he's already been given. I just don't want people to be panicked about, oh, we're, you know, we're gonna put more multifamily or not. He can't do that.
No.
And you can't approve that.
He is very limited to what he can have there. A, a, and what he's tweaking is, uh, you know, the size of a building.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, that kind of thing.
Right.
So, you know, that's, you're exactly right.
And that's a good, good point, because with West Seventh, uh, we went through a, a lengthy discussion, I'll call it a discussion, with the museum owners, which had a heavy stake in what happened there. They didn't want to block their view of downtown. And we had to do several PD, uh, amendments before we could actually build those developments. So, um, yes, ma'am, it's not that you can, once your PD's in place, you can't just go around and start changing it.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
David, I'd just like to make one comment on, uh, the, uh, increase in tax, when you said the seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. No, no, this is just a-
Oh, okay.
-sidebar in picking your words with this council, where you said, "We could put fifty percent into the TIF and fifty percent to increase the town's budget." I don't think we're looking to increase that other fifty percent. We don't want to increase the budget, we, we would like to lower taxes with it, but-
Oh, yes, sir.
But, uh, I, I appreciate that choice of words.
Well, and, I mean, uh, uh, depending on the size of your budget.
We know we have expenses coming up.
Oh, of course.
And I can tell you with all the cities, uh, I come from a public administration background. I, Steve and I both have our NPAs from UNT. Uh, uh, you're an enviable position to be able to lower your taxes, because a lot of other cities are not doing that. So, yes, sir, I'll take that into account. Um, the other discussion that we've had with, uh, the town staff was, um, what we're calling TIF two. And, um, a, as you can see, it incorporates a number of different, um, pieces, um, of planned development. Um, you already have a Hampton Inn, which I drove by, that came on. It's currently not on the tax rolls right now, um, and could spur some additional development, um, in the area. So, we took that and, um, looked at a couple, and I apologize for the, the slide and even my eyes. But, you know, I think in discussions with, uh, Stephen and Mike, there's a proposed Homewood Suites that you had received a site plan for of a hundred and eight rooms. There's some proposed retail of twenty-seven thousand square feet. Um, there's discussions of a medical office building there. Um, we call those MOBs, another acronym for you. Um, uh, office of twenty thousand square feet, proposed hall at AN, and, uh, it looks like about thirty-five units of residential. So, there is development planned in this area. And so, the discussion once again becomes, you know, what is the, um, um, how can we leverage that to make the project a better taxable-producing property or a better project, um, that will enhance the overall quality of life of, of the, the town residents? Taking those projects into consideration, and it sounds like a lot of those, uh, are pretty close and they're imminent, um, that would be about seventy-one million dollars. Um, so about half, um, and that would be about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or, um, close to four hundred thousand dollars that you could use to lower taxes. I'm a quick study. Um, and we had that, um, being built out between now and two thousand and nineteen, um, on a little bit, um, quicker development, um, schedule than we had on the other, um, because the other one was just being so large at close to five hundred thousand square feet of development coming online. Multiple owners. And so, that, that is, um, some of the discussion that we've had, um, with regards to just the preliminary numbers that we ran. Um, so we know what kind of the tax increment would be, what do you do with that? That's, that's the next question. That leads me to my conclusion, is our next steps, um, are to meet with the town staff and the other stakeholders to kind of pri- prioritize the preliminary project plan. The most important thing of any TIF is the project plan. How are you gonna spend those funds if they do occur? And then kind of size the amount of potential TIF increment. Um, I have actually been in situations where the city didn't want to see any additional revenue, they wanted to funnel it all into the TIF. Don't know why they were in that situation, but, uh, I've seen school districts certainly do that. And, and, and so, kind of size that, um, overall potential TIF increment. And then, uh, um, once there's some discussions about, you know, what those public improvements would be, how can we enhance the overall development, kind of draft some parameters for, um, the project plan? Then, it, we develop a preliminary project and financing plan. Um, and once that is, uh, established in draft form, you know, we bring it back to you guys and discuss it. And then y'all can decide, um, you know, whether you want to move forward with, uh, creating the TIF. And that's a, as I mentioned before, a pretty simple process. You just have to have a ad in the paper for the boundaries, uh, uh, one week in advance, hold a public hearing, and then the creation of the ordinance, which really does the term, the boundary, um, the TIF board, um, and, and that preliminary project and financing plan, and start working from there. You know, we've, we've put in TIFs, I just did two in Irving, and it took us about sixty to ninety days. You, you can make these happen quick. Those were single-family developments, which are a little bit easier to predict than commercial development. But, um, they could be a pretty quick turnaround. Ultimately, it comes down to that project plan and what y'all are comfortable with doing.
And just so I'm clear, uh, if I understand what you're saying, I mean, while it's okay to be aggressive in your anticipation of what the TIF could produce, the critical part is not to be aggressive in your commitment of any funds to something that may or may not-
Absolutely. And, and creation of the TIF does not commit you to use any of that.
Okay.
I mean, it is establishing, is literally a plan. And so, it is up to the taxing jurisdictions to approach you and say, and then sometimes it's a, um, little strange that the town, um, would approach the TIF board, which is primarily made up of you guys, and say, "We would like to use a portion of that increment, um, to put in these, um, um, wayfinding system or entrance way or streetscape." Um, it's up to the developer to come to you and say, "Okay, the TIF's in place, we would like to utilize that to put in infrastructure so we can get this and this and this." And that just comes subject to development agreements. And they're not any, uh, more complicated than, "You agree to do this, if you do this, we'll do this." And, and so, it does not commit any of that. Um, I can give you a good example, we just amended the Victory Park TIF in Dallas, and it incorporated going across the Margaret Hunt Bridge to a large area right there. And there's a, a developer that, you know, plans on doing, you know, quite a bit of restaurant development. We were, we were faced with, will it all happen? No, uh, probably not. I mean, we, we hope it would, um, but we, we weren't in a position to argue. And so, that project plan's budget is a lot larger than it probably actually will. Because they had a project coming on every other year in this large, new, you know, development. Probably not gonna happen, so would a fraction of it happen? Sure. And, and, and TIFs can be, the law changed in two thousand and seven because several cities had done projections. And, um, I think, um, Keller was one of these. And, um, they were like, "Well, we'll just extend it," and the statute does not allow you to extend it. It now does. But you have to go back, and so you can do it, um, and we've done it for the Trinity River Vision, because we, the recession is gonna impact, you know, how long it takes that to develop. So, we took it from twenty-five years to forty. Um, and so now that, that there's that ability to do so and kind of extend it. So, it's a, it's a tool to put it in place, uh, but nothing commits, um, like that other TIF that I was mentioning, the one twenty-one toll road. There was nothing that really came out of it, so they decided just to close it.
Yeah, okay, good.
Uh, just so I'm clear, the set aside or the earmarked funds for the TIF does not have to stay within the boundary of the TIF?
It does.
Oh, it does?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I misread what you said, I misread what you said, okay.
And that was part of the, it comes into the-
That's why they expended it.
-consideration of, um, the overall boundaries. How you plan on spending those funds is really dictates the, the boundary. Uh, two things on the boundary, one is the capture, you know, and how you want to facilitate that development. Two is, you know, where do you want to spend those funds? And, uh, I, I defer this to the legal counsel, but th- there is a provision in there that says that you can spend money outside the TIF if it benefits the TIF. Most attorneys would mu- much rather you just amend the ti- the boundary, so there's no argument. Make it black and white versus more, uh, sub, something subject to interpretation.
An example, I asked the same question when we met with him, and, and the example we used was improving, for instance, the, the bridge over one fourteen at Trophy Club for TIF one. You know, taking monies to improve the visual aspect to draw people in. But the fact of the matter is, that bridge is in Westlake, right? So, but the likelihood of us extending the TIF boundary into Westlake is slim and none. So, you know, but that, that would, had that been in Trophy Club and not in the TIF, the, the technical TIF boundary, and that bridge were in Trophy Club, you know, you could make an argument that you could apply dollars to improve the visual component, because it draws people there and, you know.
Just for the residents, if you wouldn't mind going back to the boundaries and we can define the blocks and the streets on-
On, on the TIF two or TIF one? TIF one. Okay.
All right, so now we're crossing the street?
Crossing the street here, Trophy Club Drive.
Twenty-six acres, don't, the, the thin blue line, that crosses-
And then there's this parcel, which I believe is the other property owner.
That's between the bank and seven eleven.
Okay, and then we cross the road, the thin, the thin blue line.
That's Indian Creek.
No, it's true.
Oh, oh, right, it's Indian Creek, he was just passing Indian Creek.
And we've, we included the-
That's, that's the mud.
Tax-exempt property, yes, sir.
Okay, and what's the one to the right? Okay. So, now, back to my original question, Mike, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The quorum kind of got put on the back burner, I was just wondering if we're, we're still looking at that or?
Uh, I mean, we can create a TIF anytime we want, but no, this, our focus at this point is obviously PD thirty and PD twenty-five and twenty-six down on Trophy Wood, because those projects, uh, you know, we, we're, we're reviewing some of those projects as we speak. We know that that's gonna happen. So, that, that tax increment is imminent. Hampton Inn is currently not on the, uh, the appraised value books yet. It won't be until January first of next year, assuming we can get a PID-
TIF.
Sorry. TIF two approved, assume we got TIF, TIF two approved by the council, that entire increment, whatever that component is, if you decided it was a fifty-fifty split or a forty-sixty, what, sixty-forty, seventy-third, whatever it is, whatever your comfort level is, uh, come January one of next year, you've already- come January 1 of next year, you've already immediately got, you know, I would anticipate that value to be in the $4 million range. And, you know, whatever that component is, plus the Denton County or Tarrant County in this case, whoever participates, immediately starts that incremental contribution to that TIF fund.
One of the, maybe help why you wouldn't want to do that currently with the area at Trophy Lake is that there's existing value there. And incrementally, you're not gaining year to year. In other words, the property for, let's say, the country club is not going up year to year. So you're not gaining any type of incremental value that you would be able to use for any type of projects. Right, and the same would be for Mr. Chudnow's property. What would change is that if Mr. Chudnow wanted to reinvest in his property and rebuild something new there, then you would go, that value would go from whatever it is today to whatever that new value is because there's new development there. And now you've captured that growth. But until you've got really some idea of some projects coming online, it doesn't really, it's not to your advantage right now.
And as a person that operated the downtown TIF, that was a large TIF that was about $400 million at the time. This was in the late 90s. We would have, you know, a tenant move out of the city center towers. And that would drop the value of that building from 50 million to, you know, 36 million. Heck, we had a tornado that took that building. And I remember it was $37,652,000, and it went down to 3. And so that comes out of your TIF fund. And we also had the TAN, which the appraisal district will tell you they didn't do a very good job of assessing it on an income approach. So it went from 56 when it was in the TIF, and then it went down to 26. So those are the reasons that you, you know, want to avoid any property that might have some downward shifting in property values. TIF consultants and also cities love, you know, the vacant land because you hope that it's not going to go any further down.
So to look at it from a blue sky, you know, the property across the street, we could, in effect, start building a, some type of municipal building there.
Absolutely.
Where?
By Compton.
Oh, yeah.
And you could utilize funds generated within the TIF.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked for the map.
That is.
Yeah.
I was pretty ambivalent about TIF. I didn't really understand TIFs until the last six weeks, eight weeks. And I had a lot of misconceptions about what they were. I've learned a lot. The state has, they have every TIF online. You can look at every TIF development in the state.
They exclude a lot of cities, though.
And it's very enlightening, especially around here. And I talked about this at the last meeting. The most successful one around here, and incidentally, you mentioned the Hilton, is in South Lake from Carroll to Kimball from 1709 up to 114. And that has been a tremendously good partnership, obviously with Cooper and Stebbins, but with the other property owners all the way down on Kimball, which isn't a part of South Lake Town Square. But I think, as I recall, they funded almost $12 million out of that TIF fund. We know what they've done in sales tax revenues in that area. And they have a surplus now that, of almost $5 million because of what they assessed, what their anticipated tax was going to be and what it actually is. So they have a huge excess in funds in that. And I think any good managed TIF is, and set up correctly, is going to be, would benefit this town greatly. But I think the biggest thing, and the biggest, there are a lot of misconceptions about TIFs. And I think the biggest misconception in my mind is everybody, most people, the misconception is that the money goes to the developer, and it doesn't go to the developer. That is a huge misconception, and.
I think that that was one of the things that, with the downtown, that was such a large taxable generator for the overall city. However, they did a study before they put in the TIF, and they said, "When's the last time the city spent any GO money downtown?" And it was all going out to Southwest Fort Worth and to North Fort Worth. And the powers that be said, "Hey, we would like to be able to capture, you keep the existing value, but if we generate any value, we'd like you to reinvest that into this zone." And they've done so by building the plaza, by upgrading streets, by providing parking for patrons, and it's worked out very well. So it's a way to control those investments because as we know, it gets into the city process, and there's other priorities. It's a way to kind of control that.
And the last thing I would like to say, I know we're running a little late, but these notional numbers that David threw around in terms of assessed values, and then he did some quick mental math and told you what kind of ad valorem impact that could be, that has no, he's not even considering the fact of sales tax and hotel occupancy tax impact on this, on the community's budget, right? So that's a starting point for us. And as this process moves along, as we continue to study TIF 1 and 2 to present to you, you'll soon see those projections, the total projections of ad valorem impact, sales tax impact, hotel occupancy tax impact to the entire community. Some of which goes, could go into a TIF fund, or a portion thereof go into a TIF fund, but predominantly coming to the general fund to help offset that residential tax burden that we were talking about when we first started this process several years ago. Okay? David, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to working with y'all.
I think you've helped really make it a lot clearer to all of us, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mike, can we take that presentation? That's going to be on our website, I assume?
We can put this presentation up on the website, you bet. Again, as I mentioned earlier, these numbers will probably change by next week.
Yeah, exactly, they're raw numbers, yeah.
One thing that we do is we will show an overall aggregate tax benefit that occurs. And if you choose to put any into a TIF, and then there's a net benefit.
Sure.
So, you know, we like to compare that, you know, do something and do nothing. And so you have real tangible decision points to kind of, to base those on. If you didn't do anything, what would happen? If you did something, what would happen? And once again, they're projections, but we, you know, we have a record of over 20 years of being able to provide those numbers. And hopefully with those investments, you can actually just leverage additional investment that otherwise wasn't there. Because what's the other reason? There's no other reason to really do it than to make something better than what it was proposed originally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Do we need a break?
Well, get to item 4 and 5 real quick.
Well, okay, we're going to go to 4 and 5, but let's do the, start the meeting, do the presentation. Okay. All right. Item 4 is a discussion of agenda items posted for consideration on tonight's agenda. Does anyone have anything they feel they need to discuss? Okay. And item 5, items for the June 24th agenda.
I sent you an email.
Okay. Okay. You sent it, right? I don't have it, okay. And did you attach that, by the way? Would you make sure to attach the proposed agenda? I didn't see it in here, so, okay. All right. Okay, then we will convene into the regular session. The invocation will be led by Michael Aguilara, and the pledge is by April Riling. If you'll please stand. And I'm sorry, convene into regular session at 7:23.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening to give thee thanks for all the blessings that we have in our lives, for the opportunity we have here to serve the Town of Trophy Club and its citizens. We thank thee for the good leaders that we have who will, we ask be inspired to make good decisions and to be free to express their opinions in a good environment. We thank thee for citizen involvement, for the good news that we heard earlier concerning the good citizens we have here who give of themselves. We ask that you please always watch out for our police and fire personnel, and that as they go out and do those things, that they will hopefully be led by thy Spirit and be protected. And we ask that you also protect those who are seeking to look after our nation in foreign lands, that you would hopefully bring them back to us soon. And we ask that you watch over this community at all times. And we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, item number 6 is our presentation. What I'd like to do is have the resolution, you've all seen it, and then, once we pass it, then I will go down and read it from the podium, okay? All right, so item number 6 is to consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution of gratitude to Bob Downey for recognition of his dedication and service on the zoning board of adjustment and ethics commission.
Madam Mayor, are you going to read that before we make a motion?
No, you've all seen it. I'm going to read it as soon, after we pass it in.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution of gratitude to Bob Downey in recognizing him for his dedication and service on the zoning board, zoning board of adjustment and ethics commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay. Mr. Downey, if you'll join me, podium? Okay, now I'll read the resolution. Let me just lean back here a bit. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to recognize Bob Downey for his service to the Town of Trophy Club. Whereas, the members of Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, wish to express their sincere gratitude to Bob Downey for his invaluable service to the Town of Trophy Club. And whereas, Bob Downey served with distinction and honor on the zoning board of adjustment since 1999, and served as chairman since 2007, and over the past 15 years has served on various boards and commissions, such as the Ethics Commission, the Charter Review Commission, Citizen Volunteer Task Force, Tree Board Utility Franchise Committee, and the Editorial Review Board. I'm sure there are others that we haven't. Whereas, Bob Downey's dedication and loyalty to Trophy Club and its citizens has been instrumental to the enhanced welfare growth and development of the Town of Trophy Club. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, hereby express their heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Downey for his unselfish contributions and service to the town and its citizens, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this third day of June 2013. And I, you know, I read all of that, but what I'd really like to say to Bob, I mean, Bob has been invaluable in this town. Bob has been one of the persons that I really look to as somebody who can be totally objective. He actually, whenever we had a difficult situation and we needed somebody to mediate, to moderate something, whether it be elections, whether it be a difficult meeting or something, he was always there because he always presented the neutral position. He always knew how to balance different views and different sides. And I think he did that, he brought that view to everything he did. And I think that it's just been so valuable for so many years that we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all. If gratitude were being expressed by anyone, it should be me. We were privileged to live here for so long. I've told us, we first moved here in 1980. They only let us stay 18 months, and had one of these offers you couldn't refuse. But we came back as soon as we could in 1985. For those of you who've been to Disneyland, living here has been an e-ticket ride. It's just been really, really great. I've enjoyed it. I got so much out of working with the town because those of you that I have worked with in various projects, it's a real learning experience. It had a lot to learn. But it was, it was just really, really fun. And I want to thank all of you for everything. The elected officials, our town staff, and all of our peers I worked with. It was just great. And thank you all so much. We'll miss this place dearly.
Okay. April, if we come down there, will you take a picture with Mr. Downey?
Bob, we'd like to do a picture with the council, maybe town staff, just in case you have an I love me wall in Houston.
I would also like to mention, by the way, I forgot. One of my most important things that you did is bringing back, being with the committee, along with Mrs. Engelback and a lot of other people, bringing back 4th of July to Trophy Club.
That's true. One I said I learned a lot is that Charter Commission, and then they call Charter Review Commission.
I was thinking about talking about commas on the way over here.
Stand down there with the mayor.
Okay, we'll put you with the mayor.
Can you?
That's right. Yeah. You're going to miss, bud.
Well, I'm going to miss all of you guys.
Thank you so much.
Well, we never had a ZBA meeting, but I enjoyed being over there.
Can we take a break?
Just, yeah, one second. I'd just like to, I noticed that we have Mayor Engelback and Mayor Sanders here. And if anyone else would like to make any comments, you're welcome to do that.
This is real short and sweet, and the shortest speech I'm going to ever give. Thank you, Bob.
You go right ahead.
Marshall, would you use one of the microphones?
I just don't, can't express my appreciation for the long time Bob helped me when I was the mayor and in the forming of the town. Your proclamation started in 99. I think this, his contribution goes back to 95 or '94 at least. So Bob, it's just unbelievable the time you spent. And I, your objectivity statement is, couldn't be more, hit the nail on the head more than you did. Shirley and I came to Trophy Club 27 years ago. First couple we met was Bob and Faradowney. And they invited us to the country club one Friday night. And we had about 100 Friday nights after that. He's special to my family, and he's special to this town. And if there was any time during that 27 years that he wasn't helping out the city, I can't remember when it would have been. So you're a good guy, Bob.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I had the privilege of serving many years with Bob Downey. And I think the first foray was the 4th of July committee, if I'm not mistaken. And then all of the iterations of the Around the Town when it was an actual newspaper, it was an actual newspaper at one point in time, and all the work and effort you did there. And consummate gentleman. And just love you and your wife, I'm going to miss you dearly. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, well, we're going to take a break just for a few minutes. And you're all welcome to stay. I don't know who's here to. I don't know who's here to honor Mr. Downey, but you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to part, thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the corrections as raised.
We should have.
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
And since Jan has been in the position, we actually know there's somebody from Atmos, so we're very pleased, Jan, I appreciate that. Okay, item number ten. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution appointing persons to serve on the Board of Directors of the newly created Trophy Club Crime Control and Prevention District, providing for initial terms of office expiring on September first, two thousand fourteen, and September first, two thousand fifteen, and thereafter providing for staggered two-year terms, designating a staff liaison and providing an effective date. Chief Niffen?
Mayor Council, the town election resulted in the creation of a Crime Control and Prevention District. So tonight we need to appoint a permanent board to the CCPD. The six of the seven individuals on the temporary board have stated they had an interest in continuing as permanent board members. We're very close to the regular annual appointing of citizens to various boards and committees. The CCPD plan and budget have to be reestablished. They have to, the permanent board has to go through it and establish a permanent two-year plan and budget. And so, at this point, I don't feel like it would be appropriate to bring someone in who was unfamiliar with the processes. So I'm gonna recommend that the temporary board members, six temporary board members who have stated their interest in being retained as permanent board members be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, can I ask a point for clarification?
You bet.
In the verbiage, we have designating a staff liaison, is that a council liaison, or is that truly a staff liaison?
No, that's a staff liaison. Chief Niffen will be the staff liaison to the CCPD.
It, I thought in the resolution it said you were, I was wondering about.
Or my designation.
Or you designate me, okay.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty thirteen dash eleven.
I'll second that, please. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
So we don't need a council liaison at all?
No, sir. Only to, I think it might be appropriate if I read the member, members being appointed.
Yes, please.
And they are Adam Broyles, Christopher Davis, Dina Boudreau, J.J. Isherwood, Paul Glawacki, and Timothy Gamache are the six permanent board members. And then in August timeframe, when we go out for all of our board appointment application process, we'll get that seventh position filled. In the meantime, CCPD can still take action as long as they have a quorum of four.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a quick question for council. I just wanted to make sure that, since it says in one of the wheres is that we're required to appoint seven, that you're comfortable with this action?
Yes, we are ultimately required to appoint seven, however, you're just appointing six with this motion.
And that is spelled out.
Ultimately, you will have a seventh member, yes.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
That we're only doing six is spelled out in the resolution as well?
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I thought there was a possibility of a conflict, and I wanted to make sure that that didn't exist.
I think it would be really difficult, you know, in the very short time that they need to be finished, to have somebody come up to speed. It just doesn't seem to be productive, so, okay. Any other question? All those in favor? Good, thank you. Dina, thank you, Adam. I definitely appreciate all the work you've done up to this point, and I appreciate your agreeing to continue with it. Okay, item number eleven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a consulting agreement between the town of Trophy Club and Fries and Nichols for professional services to analyze and provide conceptual and technical improvements regarding drainage channel improvements, erosion, and authorizing the mayor or her designated to execute all necessary documents. And Mike, you're gonna tell us about where that is and everything?
Yes, I will. This is part of the Highlands Development at the intersection of Broadway and Highlands Drive. It was marketed to homeowners and purchasers of homes in the area as a green belt. And our homeowners paid a premium to back up to that green belt. It is a drainage canal that eventually ends up right between the two amenity lakes. But it goes down through there, and last summer especially, with the West Nile situation that we had, lots of stagnant water pools, we actually had some erosion and sinkholes. And there was no provision to, you know, for kids who get out and start playing around, and, you know, it was just a dangerous situation. So we took some immediate action to eliminate a lot of the saplings and anything less than two-inch diameter. We cleaned up all of the cattails, and tried to do what we could. And what we're asking you to consider tonight is to engage Fries and Nichols, who's doing a lot of our storm drainage study anyway, to take a look at all of that area and come up with a permanent solution. To, we still have a lot of stagnant waters, a lot of the residents have emailed me personally. I think some of our council members have given them my email address, and I'm getting, I'm getting plenty. All saying the same thing, we're worried about our kids, we're worried about the safety issues, you know, the summer's coming upon us, we still have stagnant water, what are you gonna do? And my reply to them has been, there's nothing in our current budget to help us right away. I would like to have it studied, I'd like to have some proposed improvements done by professionals, and put that in our storm drainage plan. And while we're at it, the scope of this particular project would have Fries and Nichols also study for the first time, an engineer's study of both of those hills on, at amenity lakes where we have such an erosion problem. We have tried everything that we know, the developer has tried everything he knows to try to prevent that erosion. And I've talked with the developer, he understands that we're going to do something, we're gonna have it studied, and that I'm looking at him to participate, not necessarily with the engineer's study, but with the solution. I want something done that takes into account the erosion issues on both of those steep grades that silt in those two amenity lakes and cause a problem along the linear park every time it sprinkles. That is included in the proposed scope, along with the rest of that drainage all the way up to the corner of Broadway and Highlands. And we'll be prepared to include that in next fiscal year's budget to try to help facilitate all of that. So it'd be the staff recommendation, and I know you want to ask me a question, it'd be the staff recommendation that you approve the eleven thousand plus dollars for this particular study, and Fries and Nichols is prepared to get on it right away.
Thought it was forty-seven thousand.
I don't, I support the eleven thousand dollars, but I have a question. Since the developer is the one who promised the green belt and got the extra money, a premium for these lots that actually is a swamp.
That's not true. That's not true.
They didn't get the money for it?
No, the builders did.
Okay, the builders. Are we gonna go to the builders to participate in the remediation of the problem?
I hadn't planned on it. Technically, we've never accepted the linear park. We still have some issues with the amenity lakes and the amenity, or the linear park. So I still have some tug along with the developer on that particular issue, and I think that's the better course. Now whether he goes to the builders or not, I don't.
Here's the other issue, is that, or not the other issue, the other item is that the permit that is pulled for that entire development is retained by the developer. Therefore, the developer is still on the hook for ensuring that storm water management occurs.
I get all that, but, and the promises to the citizens is one thing, and remediating what the, and protecting the citizens is our problem. We need to protect the citizens, and I gather that. But I feel like we have some claim, if we're going to pony up the money to remediate the problem, that
Especially if the people paid more money.
Misrepresentation needs to be at least addressed, and look for some, look for some money from the builders and/or the developer.
Point noted. Well, go ahead.
I think Danny makes a point in the fact that if the builder got premium dollars without putting any premium effort or development into it, then he should be responsible.
Now, I'm saying that, and I'm telling you that I'm giving you that information by way of the property owners who have emailed me, right? I didn't buy there, so I don't know if they paid a premium. I have, I have no reason not to believe that. But certainly, it is an avenue that needs to be explored, I absolutely agree with you. The other side of this argument, or this issue, it's not an argument, but the other side of this issue is the fact that they did pay a premium, and it was, you know, aesthetically, it was beautiful. You know, it was a green belt. It was unsafe. And safety, in my eyes, trumps aesthetics one hundred times out of a hundred. And I've had some ongoing dialogue with some of those residents who are not real pleased that we came in and did what we did, because it isn't as pretty, I will tell you, it's not as pretty as it used to be. But when you've got beaver dams, and rodents, and snakes, and stagnant water, and sinkholes down through there with no means by which to control access, and, you know, kids doing what kids will do, no telling what you have. And for me, the important issue is to get the water flowing all the way on out to the lake. And that's, that's, that trumps everything else. And we can go back in and, you know, the trees will grow back, and, you know, I mean, it's gonna take a while, but get that, but.
Where does the water come from and go to? It's a pass-through.
Yeah, there's a head wall there, there's a head wall right up at the very intersection of Broadway and Highlands that collects storm drainage from the Highlands streets, from all of that development.
And that feeds into the lake, those two ponds?
Well, it's supposed to.
That's the problem.
And it was natural vegetation, right? Nobody made any kind of improvement.
There's some natural water that is there naturally, and it actually, there's a creek that flows to the north.
And there is, there is no drainage, there is no drainage from the Highlands that feeds into those amenity lakes, because I've had this discussion with Steve Leonard how many times.
No, I'm not saying.
I just want to make sure.
You misunderstood me, I wasn't talking about the amenity lakes, I was talking about Great Vine.
Oh. Because that, I mean, that's.
We don't have any drainage into the amenity.
Which is absurd, but that's another issue.
Because we have the issue, sorry. Mike, one question I had is, remember when we had the West Nile, and there were two mothers who came in here, and they were that takes in those ladies?
Those ladies, yeah, those ladies actually lived over in the Village Trail area.
By Lakeview.
Yeah, Lakeview area.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Oh, I thought they lived back by the amenity lakes.
So we're talking about a different area.
Yeah, I know the area you're talking about, but I thought that's where they lived.
It's an area that needs to be studied and come up with some potential solutions. And I've already put the developer on notice that I'm coming to him, once we get an engineered solution.
Why back there is that little waterfall not running? I thought that was supposed to help rotate the water, and it's not running.
That's, like I said, I was having some problems with the linear park area. At any given time, the irrigation pumps might work for thirty days or so. And we're just consistently having some operational issues with the wells and with the irrigation pumps. And until that gets resolved, we're not gonna accept it, I'm not gonna put it in front of you until I can look you in the eye and say, it works, and I'm satisfied.
Okay.
One more thing, just the creek by Lakeshore is the same situation, but the houses are up high. Now over there, the houses, oh, they're flat with them. Yeah, see, but that's a pass-through, it comes from West Lake or wherever, passes through there, goes into the big pond, it goes on to Lake Great Vine. But there was a study done one time to fix that, millions.
Generally, storm drainage improvements aren't cheap. But we won't know until we find out.
So we kinda let it go.
And I guess what I should say as well is, this eleven thousand seven hundred and eight dollar contract would be funded with storm drainage funds, not general fund.
Mayor, I move to approve the consulting agreement between the town of Trophy Club and Fries and Nichols Incorporated for professional services to analyze and provide conceptual and technical improvements regarding drainage channel improvements, erosion, and authorizing the mayor or designated to execute all necessary documents in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Councilman Rose, seconded by Councilman Schrader. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
I'll just say I don't know how they got Mike's email address.
It's posted on the website. So don't let him blame you.
Better than your home address.
Okay, item number twelve, the town manager update and discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Transportation projects. First one that comes to mind is Indian Creek. We've got a final, the project's been designed. We got one final meeting next Wednesday to, before we go out for bid, but we are nearing the bid stage. It includes sidewalks, because that's what your direction to me has been. And I demonstrated to you a couple of months ago that, you know, sidewalks along Indian Creek, there is connectivity along the way. And as we talk about capital improvements in the upcoming budget, you know, that would be one of them that you might want to prioritize. Now, I'm not suggesting that we're gonna prioritize, you know, make it the number one priority, but I just want it on your radar that, you know, sidewalks along Indian Creek connected to this intersection at Trophy Club Drive and incorporated into the PD thirty development and all that kind of business is an option for you to consider moving forward. But, you know, unless you tell me differently, we're gonna continue to march forward with the Indian Creek bidding process. The mud has been involved on the utility component of that. In this particular case, we had the same engineer doing, the mud had Teague Nolan Perkins designing the utility piece, and we had them designing the street piece, so that was, that was a nice deal to be able to do that way. And, you know, it's all kinda coming together, and we'll move forward, and dirt'll be turning probably in the next thirty to forty-five days.
Can you tell me exactly where on Indian Creek that is?
The scope of the project is from Edgemere, or just south of Edgemere, or just north, boy, this is a horseshoe.
It's edge of Creekmere to just past skyline.
And we're asking them also, well, yeah.
Creekmere? Can't we just do that?
No, we did right up to that point, we're picking up from where we left off.
Okay, that's what it was.
And we're going, and we're asking them also in the bidding process to, as an alternate, an add-on alternate for us to consider, if the numbers come in in a good way, if the contractors are hungry and we catch them at the right time, to include about two hundred linear feet of metal brook where we know we have some drainage issues. You can drive down there right now and see moss and wetlands in the storm drainage area, in the curb and gutter, so. Would fix all of that as an alternate for your consideration. But the primary scope is what Stephen just said. 114, I know April put out a note on the 114 progress in one of her e-blasts. I'm gonna confess, I didn't read it. I'm sorry, April.
I thought you signed off on all that stuff.
You'd be surprised. The last I've heard on the 114 is still a September completion date. However, they're going to start opening up the over, the flyovers to 170 and that kinda thing, earlier than that. You know, they still have that bridge issue leading into Rowan Oak that has delayed all of that.
Can you amplify that bridge issue? Because they were out there pouring railing for it the other day. It doesn't look like, that's not a come apart deal.
Well, they actually had to replace an entire panel of that bridge.
Oh, but that's been done.
It has been done. They skimped on some of the-
Concrete didn't meet standards.
Or the steel actually didn't meet standards. It was supposed to be an 80-year bridge, and text dots holding their feet to the fire, good for them, and made them rip it all out. Otherwise, that project would have been done in April of this year. That's delayed that project, so.
They've started painting parts of it, too.
They've started doing the painting. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but-
But they've replaced the steel?
Yes, yes, yes. So, they're on their way back to getting done, but the last, the last report I got, they were on their seventh general contractor.
Geez Louise.
Hasn't been a good project.
Project manager, isn't it?
Hasn't been a good project. No, they're, I think Austin, Austin Steel, or Austin Construction, something. One of the biggies from down in Texas have taken on to finish up that project. Okay. I had the strategic partnership agreement update. In the event that something should have happened between the time we developed this agenda and to report to you, I have nothing to really report, other than, you know, the MUD, the MUD directors have had an initial meeting, and you've all seen their response from that initial review. It's been all quiet on the Western Front, otherwise, I've not heard from Westlake and/or the MUD in terms of the SBA, this strategic partnership agreement. I wanna spend a little bit of time on June staffing and training, because you hear me tell you that we are thinly staffed, and several, several people wear different hats along the way, and as a result, every year, we're dealing with folks who just don't have the time to take vacations, and as a consequence, we roll vacation time. I'm one of them, several of the management team. I'm pleased to report that Stephen Seidel is gonna take a couple of weeks of vacation in June. It's long deserved.
Yeah, exactly.
What that, what that means, however, is, nothing will get done for those two, no, I'm not- We had some timing issues, because I'm scheduled to be at the Texas City Managers Conference for a couple of days next week, and then the following week, I've got my annual underwriting meeting with IEBP. So, I'll be gone for three or four days that week. This next week, Chief Niffen will be at his required training for chiefs, police chiefs training. That's before he goes on vacation. So, the bottom line is, I'm telling you that between the three of us, someone will be on staff.
That was gonna be my question.
That's the ques- that's the answer.
Is Amy in charge now, or? She didn't hear me.
I'm just, I just wanted to give you a heads up, and probably, and this is probably the best time to be thinly staffed, because we've gone through the initial budget meetings with our departments, and July will crank back up and really start putting the fine touches, finishing touches on a budget that I will present to you the end of July, and hopefully, I'll have everybody back fresh as a daisy and ready to roll. That's the intent, anyway. So.
But one of the, one of you will be here?
Between the three of us, one of us will be there, yes.
Okay.
And I'll just keep you apprised.
So, not one of you, between you and Stephen, but one of you between the three?
The three of us, yes. Because there'll be some times where we're both out, and the chief has kinda stayed close to the flagpole as a result. At the same time, several of you have got plans to be other places, so. It's gonna be a slower deal, although we're already starting to build our June 24 council meeting. I'll be, I'll be here for the June 24 council meeting. But I just kinda wanted to give you an idea that, of the timing and the training that's gonna take place between now and the end of the month. Madam Mayor, that's all I had, unless you have questions.
No, good, no questions.
May I ask a question regarding this? Nothing has been said about June Speed Month.
That started.
It started, yeah. It's on the website.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should've- I should've included that. We have a, we have message boards out in town. We started at Trophy Wood today, and right behind it, about 200 feet or so, is the Speed Demon thing. And we've got a plan to rotate those message boards and that rotator thing all through the community. April's doing a good job of getting the word out. We're asking our citizens, please, please, understand the school's out. It makes it even, even more critical that you take a look, even though the posted speed limit in the neighborhood might be 30 miles an hour, it may not be appropriate to drive 30 miles an hour. That's still pretty quick through a neighborhood subdivision. Especially when the, especially when the kids are out. Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
You're on a roll tonight, my goodness. Mayor Prokem, look, it goes right through her head.
Item 13, mayor and council updates regarding training opportunities, educational sessions, et cetera. The only thing I had, I did attend the Byron Nelson High School Royal Awards, which was extremely impressive. The senior class had received scholarship offers, scholarship authors totaling $8 million, which was about double what they were given last year. And I was reading through the book again today, and, you know, it is really amazing. And they had, they had one going to a number of national merit commended students. The Hispanic national merit commended student, they had someone going to West Point, plus a number of military scholarships as well, which I guess is for signing up or something. But, anyway, it was amazing, and it was really impressive. And they were like, 90% done, and the fire alarm went off. That was, they had to empty the entire school, yes. No, well, it wasn't. They evidently, they have this parade of the seniors do a parade. And the freshmen, the sophomores and juniors are in there for this assembly with the parents. But the freshmen are out there, and they're honoring the seniors in this parade, right? Well, they set up a, some kind of fog machine or smoke machine in this process. That set off the alarm.
That set off, okay.
But it did take quite a while for somebody to get there, but I guess they didn't think that was, but they had to, instantly, I mean, Ms. Parker really reacts incredibly well. She instantly, you know, told them exactly how to evacuate, get, you know, out of the building, et cetera. And then we went back in and finished. It was, it was pretty amazing. She manages incredibly. So, it was outstanding. And I appreciated being invited, so. Does anyone else have any reports?
I just wanted to note this on something, another Byron Nelson pride thing. I read in the newspaper the other day that their athletic district, 54A, placed a team in the final four of every UIL sanctioned sport this year. Not a Byron Nelson team, but, you know, somebody from their athletic districts. I just showed you how competitive that district was and how well Byron Nelson did. Within the district to compete, so. We got a very strong athletic program over there, Byron Nelson, looking forward to next season.
They also, by the way, brought up in this session, that they were ranked number seven for the Lone Star Cup. And the Lone Star Cup is something that adds points for championships in both athletic and academic UIL competitions, I think, and so it was-
Seventh in the state?
Seventh in the state, for 4A.
Way to go.
Yeah, seriously, very strong, very strong.
Yeah, they've done really well.
Setting a tough standard.
Yeah, okay.
They're doing that.
So, it's very impressive. Okay, then we will, and did anyone else have any other?
Or future, if you're into that yet.
Okay, I'm waiting for that. Item number 14, items for future agendas.
As a new kid, I've got two things.
Okay.
Maybe we could explore the possibility of moving the council day of the week to Wednesday, or Tuesday. We get the packet on a Friday night, maybe Saturday afternoon. You got the weekend, everyone's gone, if you wanna try and clarify something. Monday is, you know, the old Fats Domino song, Monday, how I hate Blue Monday. And then we come here, they're working all day long, and sometimes, not that I've seen it, but in the past, there'll be something here on the desk of the dais, and you gotta vote on it right away. It just gives us two business days to resolve some issues, or maybe even give the staff more time to get something done. Just to explore the possibility of it. In the old days, I don't know if it's a fact, but a reporter used to go to all the different meetings, whether it be Rowan Oak and Westlake, and those days are kinda gone. We don't really have a reporter that comes any longer.
Well, that's because paper doesn't report anything any longer. They, since they combined all those papers, but we, I know I proposed this before, so-
Well, did you really? Oh, I didn't know that.
And there was a reason why, but I don't, I think it's worth taking a look at.
We'll certainly take a look at it and report to you.
Yeah, and I guess the, one of the reasons, a long time back, was that people traveled.
I was gonna say, for me, Monday's better for me, 'cause I can go on a business trip starting Tuesday morning, if I need to. If we schedule it Wednesday, I'll just wipe out a whole week for my business stuff, so.
So, anyway-
I mean, something to talk about, for sure.
We can talk about it, but that's just, I think we had-
What that does, I mean, just, the law stipulates that we have to have the agendas posted 72 hours. That's what the law is. And generally speaking, you know, I would love to tell you that we have an agenda locked into books and ready to post. I mean, the flip side to what you're suggesting is we get the council, get the agenda posted on Wednesday for a Monday meeting. Right? Gives you additional-
You still send it out Friday.
No, I'm saying, the flip side would be to give you a couple more days by posting the agenda on Wednesday for a Monday meeting. And honestly, it's next to impossible to get that done. And, I mean, it could be done, but what it prevents is those action items that come in that, you know, even though you're compliant with the 72-hour posting time, if you already got it posted now, we're dealing with supplemental postings and that kinda thing. It's, it becomes an issue, but we'll certainly take it and staff it and see what we can come up with.
Another, are you saying that you can't, you can't go longer than 72 hours?
Less, you can't go less than-
I know that, so if it's sent out on a Friday, the way it normally is, 72 hours is Monday, so I'm just saying, can we look at extending it to Tuesday or Wednesday, so we have a couple of business days to get involved and research anything we have to do?
I think the point Mike is making is that we get the agenda, we could, if we had it ready, we could send it out on Thursday or Wednesday. The problem is, for a Monday meeting, if you move your meeting to Wednesday, you might not have it ready till Monday. Is the same thing, it's just a matter of how, well, that would work, yeah.
It would be a forced deadline of Friday night, that's all.
The thing about having it on Monday is, when you put it out on Friday, for the very reason it's for you, nothing happens in the town over the weekend that's gonna add anything to the agenda that needs to be added. So, it makes, if you put it out on Friday night, unless there's a major disaster, your agenda is set, and it's not gonna need to change.
I think we discussed this probably a year or two ago, and the answer came down that we was gonna try and get the packets out by Thursday. On Thursday, and because things get scrunched, I know, yeah.
We do as best we can to try to get it out by Thursday.
Because it allows me to, I mean- It's the mayor's fault.
Why not? Everything else is-
Are we in discussion?
Yeah, you're right, we need to not-
What was your second item, please?
Oh, just wanna clarify that we, the discussion for compensation for appointed officials. The way I read it in the charter, just wanna clarify it, so if there's any misunderstanding out there with the residents, 'cause it was stated in the newspaper that they would receive MUD director rates. And I'd like to clarify that, so there's no misunderstanding out there.
No, our charter does not allow for compensation of elected officials.
Boards, boards.
They could receive compensation at MUD director rates.
That was for a committee. We can have a discussion outside.
Okay, well, what is the agenda item that you want to put on there?
Just to clarify that, appointed officials do not receive any compensation as per the charter. Because it was reported differently in the newspaper.
I mean, elected officials, elected, and then boards and commissions?
Yeah, it was just the general thing of, hold on a second.
The answer to the question is, the charter specifically states-
Do we have to have an agenda item because the newspaper reports something wrong?
No.
Okay, we'll work that one through. I think that we can probably take that one up in our workshop.
If it became necessary to fund Mr. Lamont's committee at MUD director rates, the annual cost could easily exceed $90,000. So, the inference is, MUD director rates, that's $100 per meeting. So, the inference is that appointed officials get compensation.
You're talking about two different things here.
All right, you know what, this, I think-
We'll do offline, yeah.
This is a-
It needs to be clarified.
Yeah, and it's something we can talk about in our workshop. Okay? All right, so any other future agenda items? Okay. Then it is 8:23, and we will recess into executive session, and I guess I have to read this whole thing. Pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. I read this thing several times and didn't make any sense, I want you to know that. Pursuant to Texas Tax Code, Section 321.3022, tax information, which provides, notwithstanding Chapter 551 Government Code, the governing body of a municipality or other local government entity is not required to confer with one or more employees or a third party in an open meeting to receive information or question the employees or third party regarding the information received by the municipality or other local government entity under this section, Texas Tax Code 321.3022. A, town council will convene into closed session regarding economic development, tax, finance, information. Basically, we're complying with the controller's requirement of confidentiality on tax information. B, pursuant to Texas Government Code annotated, Subchapter 551, council will convene into closed executive session as authorized by Section 551.0712, consultation with attorney, for consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. One, wastewater and wastewater services, terms of interlocal agreement regarding lease and conveyance of utility system assets and provision of retail water and wastewater services, approval and parameters of representation and related measures. I would like to point out that we, for anyone who's sitting, we do have an item to reconvene into regular session, but not an item to take any action as a result. So, I don't know whether that was, I just want you to know that, I mean, you're welcome to sit here, but we can't take any action when we come out. So. 8:25 PM. 9:50 PM, and we will reconvene into regular session.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
In favor, we are adjourned at 9:51.